Hello. Go on. Okay, it's 9:33 and I'll call this meeting in the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order and ask our chair to call the roll to establish quorum and read the Metro Cable statement.
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy? Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Are we on a radio delay? A moment from now I will be handed that cattle.
Desmond?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, January 12th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda item matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send a written comment by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact us at (916) 874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your understanding and your courtesy.
Okay, thank you, Flo. And now I'd invite everybody to please stand. And Madam Clerk, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, and Happy New Year, everybody. We are going to go right to item 36. Madam Clerk, please read that item.
Yes, this is the election of the Board of Supervisors Chairperson and Vice Chairperson.
Okay, well, I guess I will kick that off by nominating Supervisor Kennedy to assume the role of Chair. We have a first and a second. Any public, do you need to take public comment on this item?
We don't have any public comments for this item.
And I just want to say, Mr. Chair, that it's the fact that Mr. Kennedy doesn't have enough chairmanships right now that we need to make sure that he feels welcome in a leadership role here on the Board as well.
Absolutely. He had six or seven last year, so, you know, that's good that you are making time for the Board of Supervisors in 2024. So should we take, should we take actually both because I'm happy to nominate Supervisor Serna to be Vice Chair as well?
I'll second.
Okay, so we'll take a vote on both of those.
Supervisor Frost and Mr. Kennedy?
I voted.
Oh, okay, so let the record reflect, as it's not showing on my screen, that this is a unanimous vote with all members present.
Okay.
I'm going to show it, but it's...
I think we voted early.
Oh, I see.
And often. And you're making a big assumption about what my vote was before you were able to see it.
It would have been an inauspicious start to Supervisor Kennedy's chair.
I could see it on the screen here, and I didn't see yours too, so congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you, thank you all, and we're going to take a short five-minute...
Before we do, I'd like to just say a word, and I'm sure some of my colleagues would as well. You know, I want to thank you Supervisor Desmond for stepping up this last year. So many times our chairmanships are defined by what's happening at the moment. You know, I had, the last time I was Chair was during the civil disobedience and the riots and, you know, after the Rodney King shooting and other incidents, unfortunate incidents. Following that, Mr. Serna had the august pleasure of, you know, managing a pandemic, you know, first time in over 100 years, which presented its own challenges. Your tenure has been just as important, if not more subtle, and that's that you ushered us into normalcy. You know, we had drifted over for obvious reasons and were all over the place, and you brought us back focused, you brought us back decorum and respect, and I really appreciate the work. I know it can be a sacrifice, particularly when you have as many unincorporated residents as you have and the needs of your community, but you always were, in my opinion, a leader of this Board first over the last year, and your work is much noticed and appreciated.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. I very much appreciate that. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. outgoing Chair. I too want to express my gratitude for your leadership over the last year and your chairmanship. I've had the honor of chairing this Board now twice, and as Supervisor Kennedy alluded to, some of those times were difficult ones, but I think not only did you do, I think, a remarkable job in leading this Board in an efficient manner over the year to do the people's business here in Sacramento County in these chambers, but I think you've actually instituted some great changes to our protocols. And I know you've given a lot of thought and you've reached out to me and others to seek advice, and I think where we stand today in terms of how we manage these meetings will be attributable to the legacy you leave as your year ends as your first chairmanship here. So I think you should leave the chairmanship feeling very proud that you've been able to not just, again, make sure that our meetings run smoothly, but you leave us with, quite frankly, a better way of doing the people's business than when you were first presented it. So I want to really express my thanks for that.
Thanks, Phil. I appreciate it. Supervisor Frost?
Well, Supervisor Desmond, I think one word, masterful, the way you have managed the meetings. It's been a breath of fresh air, and I want to thank you for making some of those hard decisions that kind of pulled back and helped us. You know, it's not easy sitting all day in meetings, and when they go into the night, it is, it's a long day, and so your leadership is appreciated. It's kind of a repeat of what everyone else is saying. It meant a lot to me, too, and I want to thank you for your leadership and congratulate you on being able to now step down while Supervisor Kennedy takes the reins.
Thank you, Sue. Supervisor Hume?
Well, Chair, I first just want to say I think it's a disappointment that just as you learn to master the speaker queue electronically, you're going to have to give up that duty. But no, I agree with the comments of the colleagues that you, I don't have a frame of reference, obviously, for this Board, I do for other Boards, but you have implemented some protocols that I think have improved the tenor of the meeting. I think this body is functioning very well, and I think you've just had a very steady hand in some tough decisions. And I think my biggest thing that I'll miss about your chairmanship is that I'll no longer hear your dulcet tones when I fly in and out of SMF welcoming me to Sacramento, whether I'm here on business or... So, but thank you for your leadership, so much appreciated.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Pat, our county exec?
Yes, thank you Supervisor Desmond. I just want to say ditto to everything that your colleague said and then add another piece from a staff perspective. You literally made our lives so much easier, and I know it's not about us, it's really about the community and our constituents, but, and our relationship between county executive and Chair is a close one because we work so closely together, and it has been an absolute pleasure, and I think you did a fantastic job, and I thank you on behalf of all of us back here.
Well, thank you, Ann. You know, I feel like it's, I'm retiring or something, and I'll miss you all from sitting right here, you know, let me just tell you, but...
We also, Mr. Chair, we have a tradition at the Board of just a small token of our appreciation for the work that you've done, and you have chosen Impact SAC as a organization. Obviously, it's an organization that does great work in the community, but it's also an organization that much appreciates a $250 contribution because when they heard Keaton Riley calling with a $250, I think his picture's up on the wall now. But on behalf of the Board, colleagues, and others, I just want to, you know, thank you very much in small token of our appreciation for a contribution made in your name.
Well, thank you all. I'm very uncomfortable with compliments, and especially when I don't think they're entirely accurate, because I think our successful year last year was because of all of us working together, and I very much honor the advice and the perspective that I got from each and every one of you, account each of every one of you on this dais as a friend, and I agree, I think we work, have been working very well together, especially because of the great staff here and the leadership at the county as well. So I appreciate it, it's really been an honor to serve in this capacity, and I look forward to doing it again, but not for another five years. So with that, we will take a short recess.
Yeah. Like to call this meeting back to order, Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, and I want to assure everybody that regardless of the guest title now behind my name, I will not change. Humility is always going to be the name of the day. Next item, please.
Okay, may I call the roll back?
Prepared for this change at all.
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
And you have a quorum. For your first matter today, this will be the public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda. Right now, we have four folks signed up, and our first speaker is Ryan Harris.
All right, so I was, hello, I was coming up here today because it's a new year and reviewing some of the things from last year, the times I came in here, seems like we got kind of off-topic, went back to when I originally came in here, and I originally came in here to let you guys know that the welfare department, this was several years ago when I first started coming in, that the welfare department was feeding homeless individuals more than expired food, telling me at the time when I was working there, I no longer do, but when I was working at the time, they were telling me and other staff that beggars can't be choosers, shake it up, they'll never know the difference. And these were, the particular item that I had brought in to you guys were some ranch bottles amongst other food, but the ranch bottle, I think it was like a couple years expired, the bottle had fully expanded to where it was extremely hard because of all the gases in it, and it was separated into about four different levels of whatever was in there with the ranch. And me bringing this to your guys' attention, I don't know what took place on your end, but it somehow got back to DHA, and then that's kind of what further led to the progression of, or added to the progression of me getting disciplined and me getting terminated. And the way that I was terminated was that your director, Ethan Dai, wrote an email saying that I wanted to stab and kill people at work, saying that I'm 51-50 and was involuntarily hospitalized, saying that I tried to escape being hospitalized. And again, I brought you guys these notes from the hospital. Oh, he also said that I did a terrorist threat warning, which is a terrorist off-warning, a terrorist threat, and I've got, brought you guys all the doctor's notes saying that there's never ever been a terrorist offwarning, never tried to escape hospitalization, I see my times up, but I'm just going to revisit some of these things throughout this year.
Our next speaker is Dave Capazano.
You can, you can come up, it's one at a time, however, you're still going to be held to two minutes each. Thank you.
And then can I get a copy of this as well, Ms. Debbie?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Can you say your name for the record? I don't know, are you, oh, you're Sandy. Yeah, okay.
Okay, good morning, I'm Sandy, and just want to thank you so much for having us here this morning. Congratulations to the new Chair. Thank you. I'm going to read a little something here that we've put together for your knowledge. And so what I'd like to start with is, "We are coming to you this morning in peace as we, the people, to give you notice and instructions so that you and your agents may provide due care. This notice has already been given to 50 state governors, to the President of the United States, to the Supreme Court, to the United States Senate, and the United States Congress. We are now giving you a copy. This week, we learned that the federal government, in alignment with the World Health Organization, has announced an amendment to a credible threat of a public health emergency. Their expanding countermeasures now include both Ebola and Marburg viruses, and extension of liability immunity to manufacturers, distributors, program planners, qualified persons, and their officials, agents, and employees. We have included this report in our notice envelope given to you. We have also learned that the government was never granted any authority to lock down the people, even in times of emergency. The main object of government is the protection and preservation of personal rights, private property, and public liberties. The government just serves for our benefit as public officers, trustees, and servants of the people. We are also attaching a list of unalienable rights, which includes the right to accept or refuse any medical treatment for any reason. Since this Board has a history of putting the county under health emergency orders for three consecutive years, we are very concerned that another round of involuntary lockdowns and health orders could occur in our fair county. Please take notice that all states in our republican form of government have sworn to protect individual liberty as a condition to be hired as trustees."
Andy, your two minutes are up, so if we can switch now?
Hi, I'm Debbie Woolley, and congratulations, Patrick Kennedy. Please take notice that all states in our republican form of government have sworn to protect individual liberty as a condition to be hired as trustees. The people of America are all guaranteed to have the same rights in all the states. As an elected official, do you believe it is your duty to always protect the natural rights of the people so that they are guaranteed enjoyment of all their natural rights? Or do you believe that in some time of panic or emergency that you can remove the people's right to freely exercise liberty, movement, worship, commerce, or any other purpose that is lawful? If so, please show constitutional authority where you get that power, posting this granted authority conspicuously notifying the public and all agents. If you cannot show where you got that authority in writing and you take any action blocking the people's rights to enjoy freedom, then any lockdown, mandate, or forced use of any medical device will be construed as being done with malice, intent, full knowledge, and understanding against your trust indenture, your contract with us, with the people. That would be the Constitution. This notice is given in peace and with the love of Christ that you and your agents may provide due care to those who have all political power, the people.
Okay, Dave?
Hello, my name's Dave Capazano, and I would, I'd like to thank the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for your hard work and dedication and for what you do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down, we appreciate it.
Thank you. That concludes your off-agenda comments.
Okay, I believe that the clerk has some notes before...
I do, for your consent matters, yes, items two through 35. For item two, you're adopting an ordinance amending 2.61.012 through 2.61450 of the Sacramento County Code related to the contract authority of county officers. You waive reading on this on December 12th. For item seven, you're introducing an ordinance and continuing to January 23rd for adoption. This is to authorize the county executive to implement a management leave program, approve an amendment to Section 45 of the salary ordinance, and introduce an ordinance amending 2.100.080 of the Sacramento County Code related to management time. And for item 13, you're adopting a Sacramento County zoning code ordinance. This is the floodplain management ordinance amendment, a zoning ordinance to amend the floodplain management ordinance, a standalone component of the zoning code. The environmental determination on that is exempt, and that concludes my notes for consent.
Thank you. Mr. Hume?
Yes, your excellency, I was like to make comments on item number 10.
Flo, I'm still getting in the hang of this. Where does it mute? District five?
Item 10, I'll read that into the record. This is the Mather Airport rehabilitate asphalt concrete section for runway for our 22L bid award.
Great, thank you. Since our director of airports is in the audience, I have, Cindy, it's okay, I don't have any questions, I don't have any concern with this, I just want to say Godspeed to getting this work done so we can move on to getting the category three equipment installed for greater safety of the airplanes. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
I'd like to pull item 17 for comments.
Sure, let me read that into the record. Item 17 is to approve authority to apply for grant funding for fiscal year 2024/25 Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Plant Planning Grant Program.
And I just want to thank Department of Transportation for not forgetting our concerted effort to mitigate any fire and flood hazards. I want to thank the deputy county executives and all your support for just making sure that the southeast county is safe in the event of a catastrophic event. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Any others, members of the Board? Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item pulled from consent or discussed or have questions on at this time?
We do not have any public comments.
Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move it, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, that takes us on to our presentation. We're going to item 37. Your Board has already addressed item 36. This is the presentation of resolution honoring Cheryl Matranga for her exceptional 33-year contribution to county service upon her retirement.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, Board members, Michelle Callejas, Director of Child, Family, and Adult Services. This here is the phenomenal Cheryl Matranga, who has been with our county for 33 years. And I won't read the full resolution, which she was appreciative of, but just the first part, "Whereas Cheryl Matranga embarked on her extraordinary career as a devoted and highly educated human services social worker equipped with a master's degree, offering her profound expertise and unwavering dedication to the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services. Her lifelong commitment to the welfare of our community's most vulnerable children and families has left an indelible mark. Her tenure with Child Protective Services reflects a tapestry of roles including family reunification, dependent supervision, a court presenter at juvenile court, and a pivotal position within emergency response. I had the pleasure of working with Cheryl, gosh, a while ago, when we were both in emergency response, and I was green, I was new to that program, and you were just so incredibly helpful. You were in the north, I was in the south, but I always knew I could call in staff situations with her to help guide me in decision-making. And then Cheryl just moved up through the organization and most recently has been serving within our quality management unit and overseeing our statewide IT system, which is quite antiquated and difficult, and she not only assists our department, but the probation department with their passwords accessing. So she's been pretty much 24/7 for...
A long time.
A long time. So I just want to say thank you, and when I think about all the work she's done within our department, it just reminds me of Mr. Roger saying, "Find the helpers, you will always find people who are helping," and that is Cheryl Matranga, so congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Kind of overwhelmed with everybody that's here from Sacramento County. I'm just in awe, so thank all of you for being here. And I was saying earlier that I started in my 20s and I'm knocking on 60, so maybe it's time for me to go, but this is very much appreciated, and it's a great people to work with, whether it's APS or CPS, but the other part that you have to have is great family to support you. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, and congratulations.
Okay, for item 38, this is review and approve revisions to the transient occupancy tax grant program allocation policy.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, members of the Board. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer, and I'm here this morning to present proposed revisions to the transient occupancy tax grant program allocation policy. As you know, the transient occupancy tax, or TOT, grant program was approved in 2017 and annually provides a million dollars in financial support to nonprofit organizations for community-based programs in the county. The TOT grant program allocation policy was last revised in August of 2021, so recognizing that with more experience with the program, there might be an opportunity to revisit the policy, the TOT grant panel convened in October of 2023 to provide the Board with recommendations with revision, for revisions to the policy. And there were four policy changes that have majority support among the panel and are being brought forward for Board consideration today. The first proposed revision is that funded applicants would take one year off before being eligible to reapply for the program. So this change would ensure that applicants do not rely on TOT funding for ongoing funding, which is consistent with the original intent of the program, for community-based projects and not for ongoing operational support. If this change were to be approved today, it would actually be effective for the 25-26 grant cycle, meaning that organizations who were, who applied and awarded funding in the upcoming 24-25 cycle would be notified that they wouldn't be eligible to reapply in the 25-26 grant cycle. The second recommended change is to update the service categories to reflect arts and culture, community development, health and human services, and economic and workforce development, and this change really just aligns the policy with the current practice. These are the categories that are currently being funded. The third recommended change is to update applicant eligibility to include the following, the first being that the organizations applying must have been in operation and completed one, at least one fiscal year, and they also must have a physical presence and be providing services in Sacramento County. Additionally, the policy change would clarify that grantees cannot pass through or re-grant funding to another organization that wouldn't otherwise be eligible, for example, to a governmental entity. However, we would still permit fiscal sponsors for organizations that may not... for organizations that may not otherwise meet the administrative or eligibility requirements. And then also, we would require that grantees must have the mission goals and capacity to complete the project that's being proposed. So these changes to the applicant eligibility would assist in ensuring that the applicants are eligible and able to execute the projects and that the projects benefit Sacramento County. And then the fourth and final change that's being proposed is to remove the priority consideration for matching funds. And this recognizes that while there is benefit to and having matching funds is important for sustainability purposes, that the administrative burden, both on the organizations and on the county in documenting and verifying the matching funds may outweigh the benefits of having that priority consideration and that there are other scoring elements that encourage organizations to focus on their organizational capacity and sustainability and that those elements would serve that purpose, even if that matching fund priority consideration were to be removed.
Okay, hold on one second, Amanda. Supervisor Serna.
I can wait.
Oh, okay. All right. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'm actually done. So perfect timing.
Mr. Serna.
Thank you. Thank you for highlighting the revisions, Amanda. Question though, have we had any formal request or maybe invitation to grant recipients in the past to either provide us in writing a brief summary of what they accomplished with the TOT grant funds?
Yes. So we do, for those that are awarded funding, we do request a sort of a project report that details what the funds have been used for and what they've accomplished.
I'd like to suggest that in addition to the revisions that I'm supportive of here, that perhaps one slight change, additional change, is that each year at the appropriate time, we have a brief presentation by staff about some of the highlights of accomplishment from maybe from the broad categories. So not every recipient. I'm not eager to make a lot of work for people, but I think it would be helpful and beneficial to the board, to the public, to understand where those tax dollars are going, how they're being applied, and the good that it does. And that really is kind of parallel to, I think, our overall mission under the leadership of Ms. Edwards to, you know, not toot our horn super loud, but, you know, I think we need to tell our story a little bit more completely. And so I think that's part of our story. And so I would respectfully ask that my colleagues consider that as well to the revisions that you presented. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I agree wholeheartedly with the suggestion by my colleague. And I don't know if other districts are the same as District Five, but I can say that for many of the organizations that are beneficiaries of this funding, they are very small in their scope and in their capabilities. And many of them are very nascent in their existence. And so they might need multiple-year funding until they get their sea legs under them. So I just want to voice my objection to item number one of the suggested changes. And the staff report says that the panel agreed to the following changes. And I know that item number one was not unanimous, or at least it should not have been unanimous, because District Five is a very different animal. And some of our organizations, while we don't want to create a sense of reliance, certainly I want to maintain the flexibility to help them do the work that they're doing until they're able to stand on their own feet to get it done. So I agree with all of the other changes, but I would ask for my colleagues to ask for a modification to number one, please.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so on item number one, we could just limit that to the competitive award and say it could still be funded out of discretionary district funding, correct? Couldn't we kind of split it up that way, if that makes sense? Because Supervisor Hume's point's well taken. I mean...
Sure. I suppose that's possible. I think the difficulty is that we would be having an applicant apply that then, you know, potentially wouldn't be eligible for a merit-based award, right? So right now, an applicant applies and they're eligible to be considered for the merit-based award and then for, you know, any additional district-based award. I think if we were to say that this rule only applies to the merit-based award, we might, you know, need to sort of differentiate that application. There's probably a way to do that. It just introduces a little bit of, you know, complexity and perhaps confusion, you know, for the applicant.
But I suspect that would... The situation applies to the smaller nonprofits that probably never get the full $10,000 award amount. It's maybe a few thousand dollars out of the discretionary TOT, right? So I'd be interested to see if there's a way maybe you could make that differentiation. Because I do think it's still important on the competitive side. You know, that's a discussion we had with the panel. I don't know what... Yeah, I don't know what your thoughts are about that, Supervisor Hume. What do you think? If there's a way we could do it that way?
If we can figure that out, that certainly meets the intent of where I'm coming from. Is simply, as the supervisor for that district, I may be closer to the ground than the panel reviewing the applications. So if it were to apply to the competitive but not for the discretionary, that gets me where I'd need to be.
So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. What we would be saying is that, you know, if an organization received funding, whether merit-based or district-directed, in the prior year, they would not be eligible for a merit-based award in the current grant cycle, but they would continue to be eligible for district-based awards.
That's fine. And I'm certainly supportive of Supervisor Serna's suggestion. I think that's a good one as well.
Okay, any others? Do we have any public comment on this?
Do not have any comments for item 38.
Okay. Back to the board. Any more discussion?
I will move approval of staff recommendation with the addition of Supervisor Serna's suggestion and also with the nuancing recommendation number one. So the, I guess, ineligibility would not apply to the district discretion TOT. Second. If that makes sense.
As long as it's what I said.
I didn't articulate it as well as you did.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Okay.
One year will get it all right.
Okay, for item 39, this is the Slough House Solar Facility, a use permit, special development permit, and design review to establish a 372-acre 50-megawatt commercial solar facility on two ag 20-zone parcels located at 7794 Dillard Road in the Casunas community. The environmental document is an impact report. And I do need to take an oath. So if we're all here, I can just do that really quickly. If you plan to address the board, I'd like to take your oath at this time. Are there members here? Okay, great. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate response as I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay. When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn. And if you haven't signed in via the kiosk, please see staff in the back and they'll help you get signed in.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. Jessica Brandt, Principal Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. I'll be providing staff's presentation on this project this morning. This is the Slough House Solar Facility. So some location and setting information and project information. The project site is two properties. It spans two properties that total 796 acres. It is roughly at the southwest intersection of Dillard and Mese roads in the Casunas community. The setting is mostly flat agricultural land. Historically, it has been used for row crops and pasture. And the southern property, as you can see from this aerial photo, does have an existing 9.4-megawatt 90-acre solar facility that was approved in 2011. The current proposal for a new solar facility on these properties is separate and distinct from the existing facility. There's a different owner and operator. The project itself is a proposal for a 50-megawatt solar photovoltaic facility with support facilities. It includes a request for a special development permit to deviate from interior property line setbacks. I do want to clarify that that request is only for the shared boundary between the two properties that would house this project. All of the exterior boundaries would retain the setbacks as required for this type of project, which is 50 feet. I'm missing a slide. Okay. I'll just talk through this one. Okay. So as I mentioned, the agricultural... The property is agricultural land. It does have a portion of prime farmland on the northwest area of the northern site. It's about 66 acres... Or I'm sorry. It is about 82 acres. And then there is farmland of local importance on the northern property. And then the rest is grazing land and urban and built-up land where the existing solar facility is located. The proposal will not impact the prime farmland. The area in which it will be located will impact approximately 66 acres of the farmland of local importance. The applicant is conditioned to prepare an agricultural management plan prior to building permit issuance that will include soil treatment for reseeding after the construction of the solar panels, a grazing plan during operation of the facility, and ongoing monitoring by the county to ensure that the agricultural use remains viable. And then this is all in relation to the general plan policy AG5, which looks to maintain viable ag land within the county. And the applicant can provide further detail on the expected agricultural management plan when they provide a presentation later, if you would like. So as I had mentioned, the entitlement request includes the use permit to allow the 50-megawatt solar voltaic... God, I can't say it. Solar voltaic generating facility, which in the county is considered a level-two commercial solar facility. It would also include battery energy storage system, although that's not present in the current iteration. It's an expected later phase. And the property itself is agricultural 20 zoning district. The use permit is conditioned to expire after 35 years, which is 2059, if you would like to know, with the option to request extensions. The applicants do have a power purchase agreement with SMUD, as is required for a facility of this size. And it is expected that the project would supply the SMUD regional electrical grid. As I'd mentioned before, the entitlement does include the special development permit to deviate from setbacks on interior boundaries. There's also a request to do some surfacing in just dirt roads as opposed to all-weather surfacing for all-access roads. That has been reviewed with fire and was considered acceptable. And then, of course, the design review to determine substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. I do want to note that the initial project submittal had been modified during our review process. The staff recommended project before you today is what is called the Alternative 1 Modified Project Alternative in the final EIR. This project alternative was found to have fewer impacts than the original proposed project, which was included in the notice of preparation. And so that's what's before you today. Environmental review. This project did undergo an environmental impact report. And our environmental coordinator Julie Newton and senior planner Allison Little are available to answer specific questions, if you have any, on the environmental review analysis. The final environmental impact report and response to comments was released on December 27th. Impacts discussed are listed up here on the slide. And just to highlight, specifically under aesthetics, there was public concern related to potential glare impacts from the facility. The... As part of the environmental impact report, a glare analysis was prepared. It is Appendix AE1. And the analysis did find that the solar arrays would not result in any hazardous glare at any modeled receptors, which did include a number of on-the-ground receptor areas around the project site. And again, our environmental review staff and the applicant can speak to that more if you would like. So this shows the development area in orange. The actual panel arrays are shown in hash on the site. You could see that it goes around the existing site and then it remains to the east of the prime farmland area, which is the row crops that you see over on the west or the left side of the property. The solar arrays would be in racks about 400 to 600 feet long. And the building is expected to... The construction is expected to take about eight months. These are some typical sections that staff wanted to provide to give an idea of the necessary grading and earthwork that will need to be done on the site in order to support the actual arrays. As you can see from these two sections, there will be some grading, although a lot of the natural topography will be able to be maintained with some earth compaction to allow the arrays to be placed. And as far as the size or height of the arrays, the posts are approximately four feet in height. The panels tilt about 60 degrees. So overall height would be about six and a half feet at full tilt. The grading of the site was reviewed as part of a planning-level drainage study by the Department of Water Resources. And they determined that no off-site drainage impacts were expected from this development. And the applicant will do a development-level drainage study as well prior to issuance of improvement plans. These are some photo simulations. The first here is a view from Mese road. And what you're actually seeing here is not the solar panels. You're seeing the landscape buffer. So as you can see, it would be oak shrubs that would be planted along the perimeter of the site and hopefully provide a decent amount of coverage for folks coming along Mese road. This is photo simulation number two. This is the intersection of Dillard and Mese, approximately 1,000 feet to the nearest solar panels. And you can barely see them on the left side of the screen there. There are areas where the solar facility steps back far enough that, due to the agricultural nature of the area, the applicant is being permitted to not provide additional landscape buffer just because, as you can see here, there's not as much of a visual impact. And staff is aware that all of the landscaping requires additional water, which is in short supply out in this area. So that is something that's allowed in the agricultural zone for solar facilities. This is another photo simulation. This is the landscape screening that would be along Dillard Road looking west towards the proposed substation that would be part of this project. And as you can see, it is a mix of shrubs and trees intended to break up the view of the facility as it's closer to the roadway here. Excuse me. And then finally, this is a photo simulation from Simpson Ranch Road. This is not the closest point on Simpson Ranch Road, but it is from that area. And you can see that there is some slight topography and with the solar panels showing at the rear of the slide here in kind of more of a dark area back there. And then, I'm sorry, one more. And then this is also from Simpson Ranch Road. Again, the solar panels sort of three hillocks over. Again, the solar panels sort of three hillocks over. So the project has gone through the Design Review Advisory Committee, the Agricultural Advisory Committee, and the Casuna's Community Planning Advisory Council. The Design Review Advisory Committee reviewed the project in September of 2021 and recommended that the board find it in substantial compliance with our design guidelines. The DRAC members noted that the proposed panels did have that six-foot height, which seemed a modest elevation gain, and they also suggested that landscape along the north end of Dillard Road be extended northward, which was an idea accepted by the applicant, and their landscape buffer was amended to include additional landscaping to kind of turn that corner on their site. The Agricultural Advisory Committee met in November of 2021 and also voted to support the project. The committee members were interested in current agricultural use of the subject property, land use regulations governing the large-scale solar. They did have questions on the sheep grazing and how that would work, and then just the natural foraging habitat and how that would be maintained. The applicant was able to provide information to them that was satisfactory, and ultimately they supported the proposed use. The Casuna's Community Planning Advisory Council, or CPAC, did meet three times to hear and consider this project. The first was in September of 2021, and that was the project introduction, where staff were providing an early review of the project to the CPAC with a return back for an actual vote after the environmental impact report was, the draft environmental impact report was complete. July 2023 was the project reintroduction, and the staff returned following the availability of the EIR. There was a little bit of a hiccup with the availability of the EIR, and so the Casuna CPAC actually brought it back to their August 2023 meeting to review and discuss. At that meeting, the CPAC did vote to recommend the board deny the project, citing concerns that the project does not reflect the values of the community and that it is an industrial use that does not belong in the agricultural areas.
Hang on, Jessica.
Sure.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So as it relates to not just the CPAC, but all the advisory bodies that have provided some recommendation on the proposed project, how much context is staff giving all the advisory bodies? And by that, I mean, is there some preface of the fact that we are trying to move towards renewable energy sources, the more that we electrify our economy, whether it be household appliances moving away from natural gas, or the fact that, you know, we have, the auto industry is obviously moving towards electrifying our transportation alternatives? How much of that is at least mentioned so that whether it be the CPAC, Planning Commission, some of the others, understand that we have some broader policy initiatives and goals in Sacramento County?
Staff does include that, at least as some context, because like you said, they, you know, these advisory bodies need to have that sort of context to understand how this fits into a larger policy structure. The applicant as well, in all of these different advisory bodies, has provided a presentation, and you'll see it after mine, that goes into actually a lot of depth on that, and so that's definitely been part of the conversation. I think what's interesting with the Casuna's CPAC is that there was a general feeling, and I sort of mentioned it here, that while they understand the greater need, they feel that it is serving people elsewhere on sort of their backs. And so they felt that this was not necessarily something that was, that couldn't be accomplished elsewhere and not take over agricultural property that could be, continue to be used for agricultural use.
Okay, thank you for that. Again, I think it's important for not just the policymakers, but also certainly the advisory bodies involved in something like this, to really understand that we have, you know, our climate action plan, we have our general plan, and as, you know, we progress through time, we're going to have more of that very intentional focus on electrifying our economy. So I'm pleased to hear that that is, the table's set thusly when it comes to a project that is attempting to, I think, you know, rightly help us meet those goals. So, thank you.
Okay. So as I had mentioned, and Supervisor Serna touched on, the Casuna's CPAC did meet, they are recommending denial. Again, there was some discussion on the goals, climate emergency, but the overall sense and what the Casuna CPAC wanted staff to sort of bring to the board was that, you know, the energy from the facility is going elsewhere, and so it doesn't benefit the local community. So that was the messaging from the Casuna CPAC. There were some folks that provided individual comments at the CPAC meetings and then to staff as well, and a lot of them I've touched on a little bit. There were concerns about glare that were brought up by property owners in the Simpson Ranch development, and you may hear a little bit more on that from the applicant and potentially from those property owners. There were concerns about stormwater flood impacts from some of the property owners that are effectively downstream from this project. The drainage study that was prepared did seem to alleviate these concerns. And then the landscape screening, they were looking for a little bit more robust landscape screening, which was something that was incorporated in the project as it moved through the review process. Finally, the Planning Commission did meet on this on October 23rd, 2023, to hear and consider the project. The commissioners voiced concerns regarding the visual, potential visual impact to adjoining rural residential properties, again, the Simpson Ranch area, to the southwest of the site, and asked that the applicant continue working with neighbors to address these concerns and kind of get creative on ways to approach that potential visual impact. After discussion, the vote, the commission did vote for yes, zero no, and one recusal to acknowledge the end of the public comment period for the draft EIR and direct staff to prepare the final EIR, and they did recommend approval of the project to the board. So some project analysis for staff or from staff. This is a conditionally permissible land use in the agricultural zone with the use permit from the board. The proposed project has demonstrated compliance with numerous peer department and agency requirements. The pair of special development permit requests are modest, and neither reduce, neither the reduced internal property line setbacks nor the internal service dirt roads are anticipated to materially affect abutting properties or compromise safety or operations of the solar facility. And then finally, the environmental impact report concluded that the project would not result in any significant and unavoidable impacts with implementation of the requested mitigation measures. So with that, staff is recommending approval. We recommend that the board certify the EIR, adopt the findings of fact, approve the use permit, special development permit, and find the subject or the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, and finally, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And so with that, staff's presentation is done. As I had mentioned earlier, the applicant team is also prepared to provide a presentation on the proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have a list of names to present on behalf of the project proponent. At this time, would, I've got Andy Dobernick, Daniel Menaham, Cork McRaisak, and Jim Gillum. I saw Mr. Gillum has been sworn, so come forward, please.
Thank you, Chair Kennedy. Jim Gillum, Gillum Consulting, representing Slough House Solar LLC, the applicant of this project. I have been sworn, as you just mentioned, and I do have a presentation, but before I start that, I want to thank Jessica for the very comprehensive presentation, as well as the rest of staff for all the hard work these many, many months, dare I say, a couple of years, on this project. We're very excited to be here today to bring it forward to you, and if they could pull up my presentation, I appreciate that. And just as I'm waiting for that, Supervisor Serna made a, asked a question, and I think Jessica did an excellent job of responding to it, but we really did highlight, as you'll see, the driving force behind the projects that we bring forward, which is the policy direction that we've received, not only from this board, but as, you know, as well the state and SMUD. So with that, I'll get into the presentation, and you'll see some slides here that I might not spend a lot of time on. That's because Jessica's presentation already covered it, but it's, oh, I see. Do I have control? Okay. There we go. So 50-megawatt project located in the Slough House community, and the project is developed around an existing solar facility that is just about 10 megawatts, and we're adding 50. For context, the project is along Dillard Road, and in the, in the project location map that you see on the screen, there's an Orange Road substation. That Orange Road substation is the one that serves the Wilton community, and we are connecting to 69-kilovolt lines that connect directly to that substation. So while electrons can flow all throughout the grid, this one is proximate to the users in that community. This is our project timeline. Jessica touched on some of the things, and there's a lot here. There's a lot of steps that this project's taken, but what's not on this timeline is all the community outreach that we've done beyond just the hosted public meeting that we had. We've had numerous one-on-one conversations with neighbors, stakeholder outreach, both at the state and the federal level when it comes to agencies. And those interactions went into the alternative that's before you today. And so, you know, not to belabor the point, but we reduced grading tremendously through the use of a more sophisticated tracker system that allows us to maintain more natural slopes on the property. And we also have integrated setbacks from biological habitat that also changed the scope of the project to get us down below the threshold for a nationwide permit.
I'll interrupt you there just because it's something appropriate to that previous slide. I understand that some revision, the Planning Commission did recommend some landscaping revisions. Is that incorporated here?
They weren't, the incorporation of landscaping changes was done before the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
They did want us to continue to work with our neighbor in Simpson Ranch, and we are still having conversations.
Okay, thank you.
The landscaping, as you can see here, just to emphasize, the blue line along Mies Road, where it comes along the front of the solar facility, that was an addition. We've pulled the areas away from the street a little bit to create some depth of field and really done a nice job of breaking up the view shed, as well as the green line along Dillard Road. As it departs from the roadway where it terminates, it is a football field away from the road. So it's 100 yards, or 300 feet, so same number said in two different ways. We are utilizing native species in two different forms. The things on this slide are the coyote bush, the coffee berry, and the sugar bush, which are faster-growing shrubs that will really take hold early, and as we get further into the life of the project, the western red buds and the live oaks will dominate the use scape. Talked about fire mitigation, it really comes in two forms. One is just the design of the project and the buffers from the roads and adjoining parcels, but we also have the ag management plan, which talks about fire fuel reduction. Jessica mentioned that it was a draft plan or that we would be obligated to submit one. We have submitted one, it's in draft form, but it's not expected to change much, it's been reviewed by staff through this process. So it's not a, an unknown commodity, it's something that the public had the opportunity to review in their consideration of this project. Site drainage was discussed, but I do want to highlight that not only are we, through the utilization of the criteria in our ag management plan, going through and decompacting and planting the soils with vegetation prior to the project coming online after construction, but we're also going to be increasing the flood storage by 1.1 acre feet. Talked about the revegetation. We will be utilizing sheep to graze this property to maintain our fire fuel loading. There are conditions in the staff report that talk about the criteria for that. Those come straight out of our management plan, and they are conditions of approval, or I should say they're codified into the conditions of approval. Really just a understanding of what this project will do for the grid, 130 million kilowatt-hours a year, and some of the documentation that leads us to be here today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board at this time? I see no one punched in. Do you have any other presenters, Mr. Gillum?
No, we have people available, we have our full team here if there's any questions that come up, and we would like the opportunity to come up at the end after public comment.
Certainly.
Provide additional context.
Sure.
Thanks so much.
Okay, then with that, Madam Clerk, we'll go to public comment.
So for our first public comment, we have Dennis, and I'm going to ask RTS if they can help me get the RTS screen up.
Reminder to speakers, if you have been sworn, please identify that prior to speaking.
Yes, I have been sworn in. Hello, my name is Dennis Mock. I'm a resident and a small business owner in Sacramento County. I'm here in support of this project. We need more like this to meet Californian SMUD mandates. I ask that you guys vote yes to support for Sacramento residents and county residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Cole.
Hi, my name is Cole Spake, and I have also been sworn. I'm here today also in support of the project. I was here the last time we talked about it, and since then, you know, I was looking over the presentation that the applicant provided, it seems like they've made some great changes to it, some great revisions, some great mitigations. I think that this project, something that I really do like about it is that they, you know, preserve some of that farmland, that's something that's pretty important to me. You know, and I think that this is going to go a long way, as Mr. Serna said, in helping our community meet its energy goals for the future. And, you know, as we keep moving on and working with, you know, going, moving to electricity and all, and all that, I think that's, this is something that this community really needs. And, you know, with the whole, you know, electricity grid that we do have, I think that there's nothing wrong with including something like this to just provide more energy, you know, especially with, in the past, we've had blackouts and all that, you know, I think more energy just seems like something that is a real good idea. And I think that, you know, just the way that the applicant has gone about it and what I've seen, and I really do hope that, you know, there's ways we can continue to, you know, work with the mitigations and stuff with the glare, seems like, you know, they did a great job covering that, and, you know, I think that just, you know, your support on this project, you know, I think it's in the community, people that I've talked to, you know, and, you know, asked them about it. them about it, and everybody that I've seen, you know, has pretty much said, you know, this seems like a, you know, win-win all the way around for everybody. So thank you, and thanks for your consideration, and I do support this project.
Thank you.
Terry.
Good morning, I've been sworn. My name is Terry Kingsley. I live in Elk Grove. As a current SMUD customer and retired PG&E employee, I'm here to ask you to support this project. When customers can get their solar from utility-scale projects like this, utility providers spend less and customers like me save money. This project will be built around another solar array that already exists, and it will use very efficient, very well-planned plan, and it's for these reasons that I ask you to support this project.
Thank you.
Hey, Logan.
I have been sworn in. My name's Logan Reed. I live in Rancho Marietta, and I support this SMUD-backed solar array. I would like to let you guys know that although there have been complaints from the locals that we will not be supported by this, I would like to beg to differ. I currently use SMUD every single day, and the more power that we have, the better. As you know, the climate change has become an existential threat that we need to deal with, and if this will even provide a percentage point to our power array, then I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna.
I've been sworn in. I'm Donna Worley. Members of the county board, I want to thank you for hearing me today. I own my home in Sacramento County and have been a SMUD customer for over 40 years. I won't say how many years over, but anyway, I've been here a long time. I firmly believe that the solar energy, that solar energy is the best and possibly only way to guarantee that homeowners will have ample renewable and affordable energy for our homes in our very uncertain future. Therefore, I urge you to approve any necessary permits and documents that is brought before you today to move this solar project forward. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Okay, next is, is this Gail?
It is.
Okay.
I have been sworn in. My name is Gail Merchant. I'm a longtime resident of Folsom and also a SMUD customer. We're going to need more solar projects like this in the SMUD service territory. This will benefit our community. It will help lower prices, and the Sacramento region will become more economically competitive. On a personal note, you know, my sister lives in Alaska off the grid, and solar she uses for half the year. So I've seen that in action, and it did not have an environmental impacts where she lives. And so I hope you support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members. Rob Grossclausser, I've been sworn. I'm a lifelong Sacramento resident, born in Rolanda. So my former active years in Del Paso and Citrus Heights, a decade in Elk Grove, and now I live in Wilton. I'm a big supporter of solar. Even this project's a pretty good project, but I ask you all a question, which is when you look out your kitchen window, what do you see? When I look out my kitchen window, I live in, on Simpson Ranch, this is what I look at. All you see here is going to be solar. And I'm even okay that all of that's going to be solar, but when I submitted a letter to the county from an appraiser, Mr. Ryan Lundquist, who's very reputable, quoted in the Bee a lot on television, that still didn't change or impact anything. And so my request of you this morning is a continuance on this item. One month would be great, but even two weeks would be most beneficial. The findings before you for today are false, and I'll read them. Under the youth permit, it says, quote, "will not, under the circumstances of the project, be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, or general welfare persons residing," and I move on, "or injurious to property and improvements in the neighborhood or the general welfare." It will be detrimental to me. And so that's why I'm asking for a little more time to do some due diligence, as last month I met with Mr. Todd Smith, and I appreciate his time, as well as the other county planner. And they said that my letter from the appraiser didn't have a number for damages, and that's why they could not change things. And so I'll be working on getting an actual number versus a letter from him. And, you know, the landowners are going to be leasing the land. Great. The developers are going to be developing it. I did a PRA with SMUD. It's, a lot of it's been redacted, but looks to be about $180 million project. Great. But the findings say no one's going to be harmed, and this is my only investment. It's my son and I's home. I don't understand why I have to bear the burden. There's zero mitigation in the plan for my property. Zero. Landscaping, nothing. Nothing to address the impact, and I'm the immediate neighbor there, so I'm asking for continuance, if you like. I'm happy to answer any questions, and if a continuance is not amenable, if you at least please change the findings to note that someone will be damaged.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. My name's Paul Smith, and I have been sworn. Been an Elk Grove resident for 25-plus years and wanted to come in to speak in support of this project. If we want to have sustainable energy and a future of clean solar power, this is going to be an important step and an important mix in the energy sources. So selfishly, as a SMUD customer, I want SMUD to be able to continue to provide safe, clean, and affordable energy, and so that I urge you to let the approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos.
My name is Carlos Angulo. I have been sworn. I live in Sacramento. I am here to ask you to support the Slough House solar project. SMUD has mandated an additional 1.5 gigawatts of carbon-free power by 2030, six short years from now. Climate change is an ever-present concern for people in my generation. Instead of just talking about the crisis, SMUD has made a concrete commitment to make a difference to global warming. But time is running out to achieve SMUD's goal of an additional 1.5 gigawatts. This project began nearly four years ago. Slough House and its 50 megawatts is a start towards SMUD's historic mandate. Until and unless we have start building renewable energy generation in Sacramento County, we will never begin to make, achieve transformational change. I know you all, as our county leadership, have publicly announced your support to greenhouse gas reduction. We need to build projects like Slough House now. Please vote yes today to support a planet's future by approving this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members. My name is Stan Van Vleek, and I've been sworn. Thank you. Thank you very much for this opportunity. If I may, the issues come up about protection and impact to agriculture. One thing that's not been mentioned is actually there's a set-aside requirement for mitigation with this project that actually stays as agriculture in perpetuity, and we are doing that on our operation for this project. And why that's also consistent is back in 2016, the Board of Supervisors approved for us to work together as partners trying to preserve our operation for two reasons. One, we're one of the longest-lived ag operations in the state. We've been in business since before, believe it or not, Abraham Lincoln started as president, and we plan on being here for a lot longer. And what we committed to do is work together to be able to keep our ranch in business in perpetuity. This is an important piece of that, and I'm pleased to say that we are 80% of the way to that. We've already preserved over 3,500 acres. And this is critical that we do that, and unfortunately, for us, delaying even 30 days timing-wise hurts us in our ability to be able to do that. Because what we're doing is taking the money from this, we're doing investments, and those monies come back then to run the operation. So it's critical that we stay on this timeline that we've established. And in addition to what we've already providing, we're also taking Sacramento County's green waste, and we're incorporating it into land, and we're enhancing the land and also enhancing the habitat value. So we're enhancing habitat, we're creating jobs, and we're producing over a million pounds of high-quality meat that the Food Network has identified as some of the best beef in the nation, here in Sacramento, and it's going to keep happening in perpetuity, in part because of this project. Here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Michael.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. I have been sworn. My name's Michael Passmore. I appreciate the time that each and every one of you spent with me in regards to this issue. I am the largest landholder adjacent to this property with over a half-mile of exposure to it. Admittedly, I was not excited about a commercial power plant being dropped in in our agricultural community. However, due to the diligent work together with the applicant over the course of time to address my issues of maintaining a true and real, a legitimate agricultural component to this project, which I think is integral to our community there in Slough House, to our county, and to our area in general, we've come together with a plan that I think represents a blue-ribbon plan, something that SMUD, that the county, that our community can hang their hat on as a model for the future in other solar projects. So I really want to applaud them. Much has been said about, gosh, they haven't done this, they haven't done that. I found it to be anything but once I came to the table to work with them. On top of that, I'd like to address the landscaping requirements that have been brought up. Those were certainly, I have, I have vision into that entire property from my residences, from my offices, from my ranching operation. So certainly, that was a concern to me as well. I feel like the applicant's gone above and beyond, even offering to provide landscaping and buffering on my side of the property, so really a dual-stage opportunity for us. I found that it's rare to have an applicant that works that diligently together. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with them, and I would recommend your approval of this project due to specifically the retention of a legitimate agricultural operation ongoing there. And I'm open for questions if you have any, both now or afterwards.
Thank you, Michael.
Dave.
Yes, my name's Dave Utterback. I've been sworn in. My family and I have farmed 190 acres since 1985. We're adjacent to the north and to the west. We're not against the project. We know that Sacramento will need the power in the future. I have served as a board member RD800 since 1987. I went through the '86 flood, the '97 flood, the 2006, and the 2016, and the '23 flood. We believe that the surface water and the drainage is not correct. All the runoff from the solar site, as it stands, runs into our 16-acre pond. All our fields are laser-level to drain into this pond, and into our pond that holds the water for the drainage. Having additional water with solar, from the solar plant, will force the water back into our fields, flooding out our crops. I have not met, I have met with the applicants, and they say they're going to disc 18 inches down and seed with grass once they finish. If we get a subtropical rainstorm, this will flood me out and cause, and the grass will not be able to hold the water as it comes down off the hills, onto the parcels. Our solution is that they would build a retaining pond on their site to hold the water back as it also will recharge the water, and I asked who would be held responsible if I get flooded out. I also farm two pieces of property along next to the Deer Creek levee. Last year, they blew out. The county owns the property. That destroyed two of my adjacent fields, so I'm concerned if I get flooded out again because of the solar, I will lose my crops. I do support the project. I do believe that it is a project Sacramento County will need in the future, and I'm hoping there's a solution that we can retain this and take care of this problem. Thanks.
Thank you.
And Haley.
My name's Haley Huaang. I've lived in the Arden area my whole life. I'm here to support this SMUD-backed solar project. I've heard for the past 10 years how important solar energy is and the advantages that solar energy has on our community. The family of one of my best friends growing up was in the solar energy industry, and we have talked about the importance of new local solar installations at the dinner table. This kind of project would be perfect for Sacramento's energy future. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes your public comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, with public comment done, I'm going to, before we go to the board, I will offer Mr. Gillman a chance to wrap up.
My name's Robert Thornton. I'm counsel to the applicant. I have been sworn. I'm going to respond to Mr. Grossclausser's comments regarding the effect on his views and the SEQA treatment of that, the evaluation of that effect in the EIR. The California Court of Appeal, in two cases, has held that SEQA requirements do not apply to private views but to public views. That's Yukaya and Oceanside cases. That's codified in the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines adopted by the resource agencies that make it clear that the significance of effect on aesthetics and views applies to public views, not private views. The EIR evaluates that in considerable depth, discloses the effect on Mr. Grossclausser's views, and addresses that issue. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of this particular speaker? Not at this time.
I thought I'd get the lawyer up here so we could let him sit for the rest of the time, unless you have other questions for him.
It's all your billable hours.
I appreciate the opportunity to come back up here. We don't have a lot to add. I think that the conversation was consistent with what we've heard in the past. The project is ready to go in the ground. We've been working hard to get our improvement plans moving forward at risk, so we hope to be submitting shortly. I am happy to answer any questions you may have or address any concerns.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hume.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Gillum. And, you know, we've had conversations about this, obviously, for months, going back in this process. My head's swirling because literally up until I walked through the door of this building this morning, I've been talking with stakeholders and applicants and other neighbors and interested parties. And so the one thing that I said early on is, is let's take down the things that are within your control: drainage, landscaping, et cetera. Can you address the concerns that Mr. Utterback brought up? Because I believe we've had a conversation where you actually increase the runoff retention capability of this property. Is that correct? You mentioned like an acre foot, or I don't remember the exact amount.
Yeah, so a few things. You know, we're taking the property, and we're going to do minimal, minimal for the size of project that it is, grading. With that process, we're going to take away the topsoil, we're going to stockpile it, we're going to do the grading in the areas that we need to grade, and then we're going to return the topsoil, we're going to build the project, and then we're going to go back and decompact the topsoil so that it can be prepared for planting. So it's going to be largely in the same type of cover that it is today. So that's one really important point. Older solar projects are not built that way. They just kind of come in and they flatten it, and they put it up, and you're left with, you know, not as much vegetation as you had before. That's not really how it's going now, that, you know, we're trying to do something better than that. So that's one aspect that I think is important for everyone to understand. The soil is going to be very similar to what it is today. And then the other thing is, in the grading plan, we have committed to adding 1.1 acre-feet to the, to the storage of the floodplain. So not increasing the impervious area in any appreciable way, and adding flood storage, we think, is appropriate. And... And your Department of Water Resources has reviewed our plans. They will have a final look at the Level 4 study, which will go forward with the construction plans. We're confident that we've addressed it.
Thank you. Mr. Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Jim. And I'm supportive of the project for many reasons that have already been articulated here today, and just really appreciate staff's work and your work in trying to mitigate some of the issues, I mean, with screening and some of the biggest issues are aesthetic. And I just want to give, maybe give you a chance to respond to Mr. Grossglauser's concerns in terms of efforts that you're still making to try to address some of those concerns. I mean, I understand that this is not a legal issue. Notwithstanding that, I think, you know, it mentions here in the staff report that the applicant is going to continue to explore options to address, I think, his concerns. Can you just, I want to hear you commit to that and maybe what some of those options are that you're exploring.
Sure, yeah, happy to commit to the continued conversation. In fact, I owe Mr. Grossglauser a call to schedule a meeting where we're going to bring a landscape architect out to his house and talk about what screening could occur on his property. The challenge that we have with this particular property relative to the project site is that the project site is lower than the houses in Simpson Ranch. They were built up on a hill. His lot falls off to the property line, and the property line is, I'm ballparking here, 20 to 35 feet lower than the house. So for us to build any, and then it goes from the property line up as you go out into the solar arrays. So you have this, this area of the site that's really low relative to the structure that we're trying to provide screening to. So onsite screening is not feasible, and so therefore, we haven't proposed any. And there's another reason why we're not proposing screening there as well, because we do want to keep a 50-foot clear buffer to avoid some fire concerns that had been raised by other stakeholders early on in the process. So just putting a pin in that, what we're hoping to do is to come to an agreement where we can put some screening higher up on his lot. He's got a nice little area that's more developed in the yard and the retaining wall that might be a suitable place for that screen, but we're trying to come to an agreement on how to accomplish that. And we realize he has other concerns as well, but, you know, we're trying to solve what we can.
And thank you, Jim. I appreciate, I don't think, I don't see the need to continue this item today. That would not prevent you from continuing to work on these issues with the proper manner, right?
Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Then I will, before you do that, I'll provide my thoughts and comments here briefly. You know, the two young men that got up and spoke earlier, Mr. Spake, Mr. Reed, I think, are the generation that are going to be most affected by this project and projects to come. We talk a lot about an existential threat, which Mr. Reed, you know, referred to this as, and it is. If this is truly the crisis that is facing not just our community but our entire globe, we have to take, you know, pretty dramatic action in order to meet our goals. We recently heard, you know, back and forth on whether or not our goals were achievable as set out in the original draft of the Climate Action Plan, and whether that date was doable. Well, I can tell you, if we're not, if we're not aggressive and if we're not bold, those dates will not be relevant, nor will smuds, which we all are depending on, nor will the counties, the cities, or the other cities in our jurisdiction. You know, we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions, and when it comes to climate, it's not going to be cheap, it's not going to be easy, and we're going to all be asked to make sacrifices. I think this is a good project. I think that it has been mitigated to the degree that it could be mitigated with the, you know, perhaps exception of your willingness to continue to work with neighbors as we go forward. But, you know, I think that this project is a project I will be supporting. Thank you. Mr. Hume.
Thank you, Chair. So I wasn't planning on leading with that, but I'll piggyback just by saying exactly the point you just raised and the one raised by Mr. Cerner earlier are critical to this project, and that is that, you know, if we're going to walk the walk relative to our own climate action plans, relative to the carbon neutrality goals of our energy-providing partners, these types of projects are highly critical. And, and as I said to one person this morning, to the extent that they become harder to develop, the fewer of them we will see. And so for every minor roadblock, which may seem minor to either us or to the stakeholders or to the applicants, those add up and will create impediments to seeing these types of projects move forward. That being said, as we look at the undeveloped land and the agricultural land within the county, large swathes of it exist within District 5. And so I am very mindful of the fact that this is a conversion of use. It is permitted within the agricultural zone, but it is not in and of itself an agricultural use. It is a use that we need as a society, and so, as has been mentioned, it's highly critical and important, but the agricultural component is ancillary and has other reasons behind it. So I, while I appreciate some of the concerns that I've heard, I think there's still opportunity for negotiation because it is a viable use, but even if this project weren't to go forward, this land would, would have constraints towards its agricultural viability. And one of those constraints is that, from a grazing perspective, you can only do that certain months out of the year and for so long, or else you are undoing all of the work of maintaining that topsoil viability and the long-term health. Relative to the drainage impacts, Mr. Utterback, as you know, I've been working diligently since a year ago to try and improve our response to the Casunus watershed. And I think that this project has done a good job of not adding to or exacerbating current conditions and providing at least a little bit of potential relief from that, but I stand ready to work shoulder to shoulder with you to, again, reduce the impacts that certainly you are going to feel or have felt, as well as the overall community around Wilton. But I wanted to say that one piece relative, because I've watched this project, and in fact, I attended one of the CPAC meetings where it was heard. And so I am sensitive to the concerns of the agricultural community, that this is a conversion of use. I would argue whether or not it comports with the values, because that is subjective. And that brings me to the last point that I'll make today relative to Mr. Grossglauser, is that when we do our findings and conditions, whether it be at the SEQA level or at the use permit level, when it talks about materially affected, that is, that is not necessarily from a financial material standpoint, because that, that aspect is very subjective and has been mentioned by Mr. Thornton, has been, you know, adjudicated and litigated in the courts, primarily in coastal communities, where one person believes that they own the view shed to see the ocean, and somebody else has private property rights between them and the ocean. And so it is, it is a very complex issue that there is case law, but more importantly, it's subjective. Because if I were a, if I were, you know, a muckymuck in a solar panel manufacturing company, or just a renewable energy nerd, I might seek out your house because it has the view shed of this great thing that I believe so much in. So I don't know that we can go down that rabbit hole, but I do know that, as has been mentioned, the, I apologize, public comments already closed, but as has been mentioned, the applicant is still in discussions with you to try and mitigate your concerns and provide landscaping options on your property, which has a greater effect towards preserving your view shed, and I believe is above and beyond what an applicant would necessarily be commanded to do, if you will. And so, that being said, I just wanted to say those things about the overarching, you know, encroachment of agriculture and some of the open space concerns relative to these types of projects, because I think we're going to be hearing more of them, and it's important that we, you know, to the extent we need to, clarify our position and our policies relative to that. But with respect to this actual project, I think that the applicant has, as, you know, personified by the fact that they're actually asking for approval of an alternative than what was considered as the original project. They've done a good job of responding to neighborhood concerns, of trying to be a good player. I believe that there are still negotiations that need to happen, and I hope that those continue to happen. And there are checkpoints in the progress of this project relative to permits. I mean, within the findings and conditions, it talks about ongoing versus prior to this approval, prior to that approval. And so, you know, I have faith that we're likely to see at least some of the members of this team on future projects, so they have certainly a vested interest in being good actors. And so I would ask that of the other folks that are involved in this as well. But with that, I would move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and Mr. Cern has punched in.
Thank you. And I'll try not to repeat what has already been said, but obviously with my second, I'm very supportive of the project for many of the reasons that have already been cited by my colleagues. But I just wanted to say thank you to the, to the project applicant team, because having been in a prior life in a similar profession in terms of helping landowners move forward with either change in land use or development projects, I always make a distinction between kind of the half-baked applications and those that are very mature in terms of the fact that there's been a lot of ongoing back-and-forth discussion, partnership, quite frankly, with adjacent neighbors, the fact that the alternative that is being requested of our approval today reflects kind of the iterative process of making sure that the fluidity of the application is, you know, bears a consequence to the final character of the project. I think it's kind of a fool's errand to think that, whether it's a solar array project or a development project, a housing project, that you think that the, what you come in day one with is going to be what you get approved at the end of the process. I think the best projects are really a function of what I believe to be the necessary communication between neighbors and, and landowners and the applicant team. So I just want to congratulate Mr. Gillman and his team for, I think, doing a really thorough job of achieving just that. And so, again, I'm very supportive of the project for many of the reasons cited already. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Next item, please.
So Item 40 is the presentation of the Environmental Management Department's fee schedule for fiscal years 24, 25, and 25, 26.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Jania Monasterio, and I am the Director for the Environmental Management Department, also known as EMD. The presentation this morning is to provide you with information about our fee amendment and to answer any questions. We are not seeking action at this time. The current fee schedule was approved in 2021 for five years, and this amendment is a corrective adjustment for a selection of six programs. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and its impact on businesses within the county, EMD did not include an increase for all fees in 2021, intending to evaluate the fee schedule and make corrective adjustments when economic conditions improved. This amendment will be effective for the next two fiscal years, after which EMD will return with recommendations for the next five-year fee schedule. The presentation this morning will cover these topics. I will start with some background information about EMD and the fee amendment. I will provide details about stakeholder outreach efforts and initiatives undertaken by EMD to maintain costs. And last, I will present a summary of the amended fees. EMD's staff is here today, as well as our fee study consultant, to assist with answering any questions. EMD's mission is to protect public health and the environment. We have 32 distinct environmental health programs, and we conducted over 29,000 inspections countywide last fiscal year. We do all this with 117 full-time employees consisting of environmental health specialists and support staff. EMD is a special fund department and does not receive general fund support. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, EMD recognized the impact to businesses throughout the county. Therefore, we delayed increasing permit fees at that time for certain programs, intending to evaluate them as economic conditions improved. We conducted an off-cycle fee study in 2023, focusing on those programs, as well as any others that were not fully cost-recovering. This resulted in amendment to the current fee schedule for six programs. These programs are retail food and solid waste, they were not increased in 2021, underground storage tank, above-ground storage tank, California accidental release, and liquid waste programs. These fees will be effective July 1st, 2024, and the increase will be phased in over two years. EMD is also presenting an addition of an annual inflator using an established CPI, or Consumer Price Index, which is published by the U.S. Department of Labor. The West Region CPI is the most appropriate for this area and will increase fees incrementally as opposed to large fee increases every five years. Last, hourly rate has been adjusted from $213 to $232. The last adjustment to the hourly rate was in 2010. This is in line with hourly rates for comparable environmental health jurisdictions. In an effort to keep fees as low as possible, EMD is engaged in several cost-saving initiatives. EMD utilizes technology and innovation in all of our services. We are working towards becoming a paperless office. We have integrated various processes with our current database, and we have embraced cloud-based computing. This has allowed us to make improvements to streamline services, such as implementing home-to-field inspections, providing online applications to our customers, utilizing GIS and other applications to map service areas and to improve inspection routing. We have also implemented processes to recover costs when additional time is spent at large or complex facilities, as well as time spent on complaint response. Oh, my apologies, I didn't move the slides. So this is the slide for the Technology and Innovation Streamline Services and Exceptional Time Recovery. In summary, if the total 309 fees evaluated, 198 will remain unchanged, 111 will be amended. As discussed previously, the hourly rate will be adjusted to $232, which is a $19 increase or 9%. The fee study methodology, we utilize the services, we utilize the services of a private consulting firm. The methodology is described here. Staff time is established per position for each required activity. The time is multiplied by the position hourly rate, and then overhead and support costs are distributed. The result is the total cost for the fee or service. Quality control is built into the study by cross-checking real-time data and balancing all hours. The next few slides, I will cover the six amended fee, program fees. Don't worry, I will not go through all 111 fees. Instead, I'll give a brief description of each program, and then I will show a table of the most common permit types for you to look at. The full amended fee schedule is included with this item and also is located on our website. The first is the Food Safety Program. This includes businesses that provide food for sale to the public. This includes restaurants, cafeterias, bakeries, mobile food, and festivals. In fiscal year 2223, almost 8,000 permits were issued and over 13,000 inspections conducted. This table shows the breakdown of the most common permit types. The increase will be phased in over two years. This program did not see a fee increase in 2021 at the last approved fee schedule due to the impacts of COVID-19. The last time these fees were adjusted was in 2015. The next program is solid waste. These facility types include refuse vehicles, landfills, and composting facilities. In fiscal year 2223, EMD issued 54 permits and connected 283 inspections. The common permit types are shown here on this table, and the increase will be phased in over two years as well. The third program is the Underground Storage Tank Program. These are facilities that store hazardous materials underground, such as fuel stations. This program includes the permits for the installation, operation, upgrade, and removal of these tank systems. In fiscal year 2223, EMD issued 172 construction permits and connected 477 inspections. The table on this slide shows the most common permit types for this program, and the increase will be phased in over two years. will be phased in over two years. The next program is the Above Ground Storage Tank Program, and includes facilities that store petroleum above ground. The facility is permitted by the total quantity of petroleum stored. In fiscal year 2223, EMD issued 281 permits and conducted 103 inspections. The table on this slide shows the most common permit types for this program, and again, the phase in, the increase will be phased over two years. The next program is the California Accidental Release Prevention Program. It includes facilities that store extremely hazardous materials that, if released, would greatly impact the neighboring areas. These facilities are under higher levels of control and monitoring, and EMD inspects for compliance with these requirements. In fiscal year 2223, EMD issued 61 permits and conducted four inspections. The table here shows the two permit types that will be amended. The phase in will be over two years as well. And last is the Liquid Waste Program, also known as On-Site Wastewater Treatment Systems, or Septic Systems. EMD issues permits for the installation, repair, destruction of residential and commercial systems. In fiscal year 2223, EMD issued permits for 69 new installations, 136 repairs, and 44 destructions. The table on this slide shows the most common permit types, and again, will be phased in over two years. EMD is projected to be deficient by about 10% for total cost recovery in fiscal year 2324. This fee amendment should achieve 100% cost recovery by fiscal year 2526. Careful, EMD carefully reviews each permit and service fee, and we are continually implementing cost-saving measures into our work processes to ensure fees are as low as possible, while still meeting our commitment to protect public health and the environment. Thank you, and our amended fee schedule is available at emd.saccounty.gov, and we're able to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from the board at this time? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Mr. Hume.
Great, thank you, Chair. I just want to thank staff for being very methodical on the implementation of this, and with that, I would move the item.
I believe there's not an action at this point. It's just a report.
Just a report?
Yeah.
I withdraw my motion.
I will say, oh, Mr. Desmond, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, I guess my question was for you, Janice, are you looking for any guidance or feedback from the board? Number one. But number two, I just want to commend you for being so methodical about this. I think this is the right approach we're taking, but to really focus on looking inward in the department where we can save costs internally, because I think before we ask any ratepayer or end-user to pay more, we have to be willing to really scrutinize our own operations very, very closely, and I'm confident you're doing that. So I just want to commend you for that, and thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond. Janie, I, a couple things. First of all, I was going to save this comment until the end of the meeting during comments by board, but here you are, so I will. And say that when I first started this job, I guess 10 years ago, you know, your agency was more one of a gotcha agency, and did not have a very good reputation in the community, as far as the business community, and how easy to deal with. That has changed dramatically in those years, first implemented by your predecessor, but you have carried that torch. And I'll give two concrete examples. Recently, in the last six weeks or so, I've made emergency calls to you guys because there have been a couple of situations in which one restaurant was going, a national firm was going to pull the plug because if we didn't get the permits in, in time. And you did that. You saved that business from being a downtown business restaurant, and that's much appreciated. Another one, an immigrant to the United States who saved all of her pennies and worked through the restaurant industry and various levels to open up her own restaurant, tie time on 10th Street. She could not have withstood another week of any delays of any kind, as she had exhausted her savings to realize her dream and also bring a valued business to Sacramento. You answered the call. You got that done in an extremely timely manner during the holidays. And I just use these two examples of so many of the examples that I could pull up of the last couple of years, several years, coming out of your agency, and I want to thank you for leaving behind the gotcha culture and attitude and really being a true community partner. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Staff at EMD work very hard to have these relationships with the businesses. It is, it's a win-win for everyone when we are able to provide the education prior to inspections. Inspections go nicer. Inspections are, have an easier time. It's really about compliance, and that's really where we want to be. And so, thank you for your words on that, because that is our mission, and that is the direction that we are heading into.
Thank you. And specifically to this item, I particularly do like linking it to the CPI, so that, because as we know, businesses want more than anything. They want predictability, and I think this provides that and fairness as well. So, great work.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, we had one person in the public raise their hand, and they were behind me, so I didn't see them, but they're not signed up, but they would like to make a comment.
Okay, make note of that, that the clerk does not have eyes behind her head.
I'm named Sandy Marquez.
Okay, Ms. Marquez.
Hi, thank you. I thought it was a really good presentation, and I could follow it pretty much. So my comment was on, on a graph, I think it was, that you put up there, and it was the category before the Liquid Waste Program. I think you had said that there were over 65 permits issued, but there were only four inspections, and it was like a really dangerous kind of like underground liquid storage or something. Do you remember that? Yeah. So I was just kind of wondering. I mean, I know that the inspections cost money, but why were there so few when we're talking about something so dangerous? Yeah, that was my comment. That's all. Thank you.
Whether you have a quick response? It's a legitimate question.
No, that's a great question. So, the program that you're referencing is the California Accidental Release Program, and the inspection frequency is every three years. And so, there are some years where there's more inspections and other years where there's less. So in that fiscal year, there were four, and the next fiscal year, there'll be more. And so in that particular program, it just cycles of when the inspections occur. So that, but in the three-year period, all of those facilities will receive an inspection.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
No other comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Okay, so we have your owner's appointments for 2024 for boards and commissions. So if you can refer to your spreadsheet, I'm going to walk you through that. And I want to go on record as well that I am going to ask the board to take action on three additional boards: SAC, Central Groundwater Authority, Sacramento Groundwater Authority, and the San Juan Water District, because Michael Peterson has retired, and so you'll need to do a designee. So we'll start from the very top. Your first item is the Adult and Aging Commission.
That will be Keaton Riley, unless Vanessa would like to continue to do that on an ongoing basis.
No, I'm fine with Keaton Riley.
Okay. Keaton got the job. Okay. And then we will also...
Alternates.
Okay, that one's completed. Sorry. Nope, we're completed on that. Now we need your area for agency on Aging Governing Board. And I'm going to look to Mr. Cerna for an alternate.
Yes, I'd like to appoint Cecile Nunley.
Okay, got that. I'll look to Mr. Kennedy.
I will maintain my current appointee.
Thank you. Mr. Desmond?
Maintain. Carl Burton.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
Megan Rose.
Thank you. And Mr. Hume.
Maintain. Rebecca Sloan.
Thank you. Okay, and we're going to move down to the County Leadership Advisory Committee. If there is a board that you want to stop that is not highlighted, please stop me, and we'll take action on that. We're on the County Leadership Advisory Committee. We need to take care of your designee appointee member.
Clearly, that would be David Villanueva.
Yes, it would. Okay. Let's now move to Criminal Justice Cabinet. So I'm going to, this is a chair or chair-designee.
Are the current appointees interested in maintaining?
I'm happy to maintain.
Okay.
Unless someone else wants it, I'm happy to maintain it.
We'll just keep it the way it is.
Okay. And then let's move to the Freeport Regional Water Authority. Let me get my glasses.
I will tell you that all the years I've been on this, I did not know that there was a staff position on there. Okay.
It's a non-voting position.
Okay.
So we'll change that to David.
Yes, unless you have another idea. Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the Greater Sacramento Economic Council.
Okay, we will go with our common practice now and have the chair be the member with the vice chair as the alternate. And if there needs to be a public sector member, then that would be Mr. Villanueva.
Thank you. We will update that. Okay, let's move down to the Law Library Board of Trustees.
Ms. Travis, are you okay staying on?
Yes, I am.
Then, next.
Let's move to the Northern California World Trade Center Board. This is the, the chair is typically the member, the vice chair is the alternate.
Okay, it's a huge time suck, I believe, so yes, I'll be glad to do that.
Okay, so we'll switch that around accordingly, and Cerna will be the alternate.
Correct.
Okay, let's move to the Regional Human Rights Fair Housing Commission Governing Board.
Okay, currently, myself and Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Frost, are you good? Okay, with an alternate of Mr. Hume? Okay, then we'll maintain.
No changes. Thank you. And then I'm going to drop down to the Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority, so that we can replace Mr. Peterson with Matt Satao.
Please.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have the Sacramento County Disaster Council. The chair is typically the member, and the vice chair is the alternate.
Okay, we'll maintain that practice with myself being the member and Supervisor Cerna the alternate.
Okay.
Although I can't think of anyone better for the Disaster Council than Supervisor Desmond, but...
Okay, let's drop to the Sacramento County Mental Health Board. So this is a chair or chair-designee. Do you guys want to leave this one as is?
What's the desire of the board?
I say leave it as is.
Okay, we'll maintain.
We're good. Okay. Let's go to Sacramento County Public Facilities Financing Corporation. Typically, the chair is the president, and the vice chair of our board is the vice president.
We will keep that practice.
Thank you. Let's drop to Sacramento Groundwater Authority. We also need to replace Michael Peterson with Matt Satao.
Consider it done.
Thank you. Let's go to the next page and drop to Sacramento Regional Transit District. We just need action on Mr. Hume, because your term expired.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and then let's drop to the San Juan Water District, replacing Michael Peterson with Mr. Satao.
Correct.
And does your board have any other boards that they would like me to address?
Mr. Hume.
Thank you, Chair. This is a bit unorthodox, because it's not one of the boards that's highlighted for consideration today, but I just want to reiterate, when she announced her retirement, I suggested to Supervisor Frost that I would be willing to have a warm handoff for SACOG, and unfortunately, a lot of time has passed since then, so I'm just reiterating that suggestion, and at any time that you feel, if you'd like to do that, that'd be great. But certainly, I'd like to be in the queue for consideration when it comes up again.
Thank you, and I believe that would have to be a vote of the board, so at that time, we'll do that. Okay, any other comments, questions? I have one comment, and that's Mr. Cerna will understand. Thank you, Flo, for a very, very painless and easy process. It wasn't always that way.
No, that's true.
Okay, so now we'll go to the, oh, your regular appointments. Let me get that document out. This one's, I believe, a pretty long one, so this is item 42. And you are continuing to January the 23rd, the Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Rio Linda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, and Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council. You're continuing to February 6th, the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Building Board of Appeals, Children's Coalition, County Service Area 4C Delta, Elk Grove, Casumna Cemetery District, the Human Services Coordinating Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Youth Commission, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. You're also continuing to February 27th, the Assessment Appeals Board, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, and the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. For your first item today, we have the Adult and Aging Commission.
Okay, Chiefs recommend reappointing Teresa Avá to the Adult and Aging Commission, and continue the remainder to February 27.
Thank you. Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please reappoint Manaz Kazari, and continue remainder to February 27.
Thank you. Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please reappoint Rayburn Leno and Michael Rockenstein.
Thank you. Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Please continue to February 27.
Cemetery Advisory Commission, Mr. Cerna.
I'd like to nominate Brady Oppenheim, and waive the process.
Second.
Unanimous vote. And then Mr. Hume.
Continue to February 27.
Thank you. Civil Service Commission, Mr. Cerna.
I'd like to nominate Sally Ly, and waive the process.
Second.
Unanimous vote. Okay, and Casumnas Area Community Planning Advisory Council. We'll start with Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to January 23.
Thank you. And then Mr. Hume.
Please continue to February 6.
Thank you. County Planning Commission, Mr. Cerna.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Mariana Corona Sabiano.
And waive the process.
No, I'm just...
Okay, and then Supervisor, Mr. Desmond.
Please nominate Damon Conklin, and waive process.
Second.
Mr. Desmond.
Oh, my vote screen was still up here.
Okay, sorry. And Ms. Frost, can you cast your vote?
I think I cast early, and I did it again. Sorry.
Okay, so no problem. It's a unanimous vote, for the record. Okay, and we did not waive on Mariana. Okay, so County Service Area 4B Slough House, Wilton Casumnas, Mr. Hume.
Please reappoint Kathy Jow, and continue the remainder to February 27.
Thank you. Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council.
Chiefs recommend reappointing Stephen Andrews and Sharon Martin, and continue the remainder to February 27.
Equal Employment Opportunity Commission Advisory Committee.
Chiefs recommend nominating Paula Thomas Nelson, and continue the remainder to February 27.
Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please reappoint Ron Lees, and continue remainder to February 27.
Thank you. Galt Arno Cemetery District, Mr. Hume.
Yes, please reappoint Elda Myra Freeman and Guy Rutter, and continue the remainder to January 23.
Thank you. Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Board.
Chiefs recommend nominating Patsy Jimenez and Robert Hickman, and continue the remainder to February 27.
All right. Public Health Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend reappointing Chase Smith, Alex Schmaltz, and Rachel Weinrub, and continue the remainder to February 6.
Thank you. Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend reappointing Diana Burdick and Melinda Avi, and continue the remainder to February 27.
Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Chiefs recommend continuing this item till January 23.
Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Mr. Cerna.
I'd like to nominate Tracy Stugrath.
Okay. And Sacramento County Mental Health Board. We'll start with Supervisor Kennedy.
Which position is open of the three? I didn't realize I had one.
Oh, this, I don't...
Oh, okay, yes, 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 I do. Never mind. Renominate Corinne MacIntosh-Sacco.
Renominate Corinne Mekentash Sacco.
Okay, and then Mr. Desmond?
I'd like to nominate Melinda Avi to fill Paul Wagstaff's seat.
Okay, and then Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to January 23.
And Supervisor Hume?
Please continue to February 6.
Thank you. Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission will start with Supervisor Desmond.
Please continue to February 27.
And then we'll go to Supervisor Frost.
Continue to January 23.
And then Chair?
Chiefs recommend continuing that item till February 6.
Got it. Sylvan Cemetery District, Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to January 23.
Okay, thank you. That concludes your nominations and appointments, and now we're on to county executive comments.
Just want to quickly reiterate my thanks to Supervisor Desmond for his last year as chair. Made it quite pleasant, and sorry that I won't be here all year to work with you Supervisor Kennedy as chair, but for two weeks, that'll be good.
It'll be the best two weeks of your life.
It's a good thing we took care of the serious business last year.
Next?
Board of Supervisors' comments.
Any? Mr. Serna?
Thank you. I just want to take a moment and just reiterate something I just saw on our own county animal care website, which is, we have some capacity challenges right now, and I just wanted to let the public know that we are waiving the adoption fees starting today, and running through Saturday, I believe. So that's incentive for folks that are seeking a pet from our animal care office out on Bradshaw. It's a great opportunity right now to do so without any charge and help a pet out, so thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, we do have one closed session item, but there will be no report out, so we're adjourned.
Every meeting's going to be like this, right, '24?
Yes. Right.